David Matt, did you go to the conference last week?
David Walagora was our representative at that particular conference. And Robert McConnell was our rep at the MTA conference.
Yeah, I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission of Delta Township to order. Let's stand for the pledge and I'll ask Member Kozinski to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Secretary McConnell.
Member Schweitzer.
Present.
Member Metta.
Here.
Member Mutry.
Present.
Member Kozinski.
Present.
Alzinga is absent. Member Bradley.
Here.
Secretary McConnell is present. Vice Chair Hunter. She knows, is that correct?
Correct.
And Chair Wainfield.
Here.
Okay, we do have a call.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Member Schweitzer.
I vote that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Been moved by Member Schweitzer, supported by Member Mutry, the agenda be approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Next item is approval of the minutes. We have the minutes of the September 25th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
So moved.
Been moved by Member Kozinski, supported by Member Bradley, that the minutes be approved. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, minutes are adopted. Thank you. There is no correspondence, there is no old business, and that moves us to public hearings. Secretary McConnell.
Yes, we have case number eight dash twenty-three dash eleven, request for special land use permit for drive-through for the crack chicken restaurant located at forty-nine oh one West Saginaw Highway.
My team staff.
All right, so recently opened a fried chicken restaurant called Crack Chicken at forty-nine oh one West Saginaw. Then first use as a restaurant, it's been several financial institutions over the years, most recently Look Insurance. It has a window that's been sealed in, but used to be a teller window for the former bank that the current owner of the crack chicken would like to turn into a drive-through, drive-through or pickup, a pickup window for online orders for his restaurant. We, our ordinance doesn't make a distinction between drive-throughs and then just a pickup window for, for to-go orders. I think the most recent one we made through, go through like a dress, so we make them go through the, the drive-through special land use permit process. I think the most recent one was Texas Roadhouse, we made similar thing, they did online orders and fought us about needing a drive-through for that and we're treating everybody the same there. He, so the, when the, or working with the applicant for about two years, came to us originally and asked about the site for a restaurant and told him that it could go in as is, but if you put in a drive-through, it would require a special land use permit, which would trigger the property being brought into modern standards because it, it exists in the West Saginaw overlay district, which is the mile from Elmwood to Waverly where it's a lot of stuff that was developed either pre-zoning or early zoning where, where it's a lot of paved surface and just has rules in place to kind of bring it up and make it a little nicer looking. So went to the ZBA to confirm our decision that he would need that was grand or upheld in March of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, and then in July, we, we had a variance request for the, the various parts to bring it into case just in case you do approve it. So you've got five variances, but more or less it's just a couple of things here. So I got a diagram that outlines it. So we got two variances for green belt width and then also parking lot setback, both of which are supposed to be ten. This is a seven feet. So he's going to be required to plant the required green belt in just the seven foot space instead of the ten, not much of a change. And then this, this requires a five-foot setback generally if there's not connectivity between parking lots. So he got a waiver from that because it's existing. And the five feet would have encroached on his drive-through and made it basically impossible. And then also the, you got a variance to reduce the traveling width, so he could accommodate the drive-through. And then also a variance from the green belt standards, just for lack of room and also ju- just because it would create visual issues with our clear sight. Twenty feet from any driveway, you have to have stuff under three feet, so the required pine trees would make it so you couldn't see there, so we get a variance for those things. So he's looking to do a the drive, or the drive-through window, I think, as I just said, was, is located approximately here under the canopy. He wants to have it just wrap around and do, so he's required to have about six spaces worth at ten-foot depth and he has that. I had a, the neighbor behind who, who's been attending all the meetings wasn't, wasn't able to make it. Craig Condit of six seventeen Theo, he just had kind of two issues, one of which was, was just kind of general noise, which I don't know is something that we can alleviate, it's a restaurant on Saginaw Highway, you know. The other issue, he was worried is, so there have been issues with, there's a light on the back of the building that doesn't conform to our standards, it needs to be full cutoff, and Mr. Hadad knows that. That will be required to be taken care of as part of site plan review, but the, the neighborhood here also said, you know, if the people are stacked up here and just kind of waiting, the lights will be shining, right? So he requested a privacy fence be installed that wouldn't be required. He, he is going to be required to put in a type two or type B buffer here, that's, you know, more to obscure the view, it's not going to completely block light. So if the planning commission was inclined, they could require that as a condition or recommend it as a condition to the board, but you're not required to do that. He's, he's going to be required to put the landscaping in. I think that is all the major overlying issues. I'm, I'm free to answer any questions and so is Mr. Hadad, if you have any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Yep.
What's, what's involved with the type B buffer?
The type B buffer is a, it's ten feet wide or just, or sorry, three feet wide. It's a five-foot tall pine tree and then shrubs kind of interchanged, so it's, it's not going to completely block the light.
It's not a solid screen.
Yeah.
It is vegetative, combining trees and shrubs and there's depending on how many shrubs and trees you use. You may also, you can also use berming and fencing and things like that. So you could have a fully vegetated or a combination of fencing and berming along with the vegetation.
Any other questions for staff?
Do I understand this is a drive-up window and not a drive-through?
Right, so he, so it'd be just for online orders. Right now, people are just parking and coming inside and then this would allow him to just have a, a window that he could hand the stuff out through and not have to have a staff member walk out into the parking lot. So that was something we discussed at length was just, you know, putting a couple of signs up in the parking lot for, for pickup orders would be kind of a way around having to go through.
Sketch, okay. Much like the Chipotle one, too.
Right, exactly.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, do we have the flexibility to increase the density of taller vegetation in that type B buffer? Fewer shrubs, more trees that would more effectively block the lights? I mean, I can see where their concern would be.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, you could, you could do the same thing, it'd be the, probably the same discretion as the, the fence. Yeah, you could, you could, instead of shrubs, you could.
I think it'd be more effective. Right, I agree with it there.
Nice line of arboretis that.
Right, right.
Would save, serve the same purpose as a fence and be.
Yeah.
Be nice. Any other questions for staff? Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, yes. Sir.
Mr. Doc, could you please come up to the microphone? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Wayal Hadad and my address fifty-eight thirty-four River Ridge Drive, Lansing, four eight nine one seven.
Thank you.
Sir, would, would, with the fact that it's a drive-up only to pickup, have you considered, would you consider putting a sign up that it is just for pickup?
Sure, because.
So that would, that would alleviate some of the stacking possibilities.
Sure, we wouldn't have a place where people can order like McDonald's, so you just come to, when they order, we'll tell them, you know, we only have a pickup window. And because also we cooked the order, so nothing like cooked already, you place an order, we'll give you twenty minutes to be done, so nobody can, you know, stay on the window twenty minutes to have it go. And, but we could put a sign, that's no problem, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What are your hours of operation?
From ten to eleven, weekdays, ten to twelve week, weekend, like Friday and Saturday till, till toward midnight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One other thing, when I was over there this afternoon, there were cars parked halfway on the pavement and halfway onto the, to the, to lawn on that, on that drive-through side. Are they, are you gonna make those parkings, make those into parking spots?
No, this is the employees, maybe they parked there like that.
Well, there, there were four cars there, but.
Yeah, they were the employees and we, nobody parks and no customers parked in the back, so I'm sure the, where, I wasn't there, but I'm sure they're the employee.
Because that would, that would cause a problem there with, with the, with the drive, with the pass-through and the pickup window there.
Yeah, I know, well, they move and they're supposed, yeah, but they're moving, I mean, parking out to be close to the, you know, back door where it's, they'll go through in there.
Okay, yeah. All right, thank you.
You would go. Any other questions?
Yep, and the, and just to show, the plan shows for those to go away and just become part of the green belt area, so, yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Hadad.
Yes.
Your sign says that you have a Arabic market.
Not Arabic market, grocery, you know, Arabic grocery shelves, not the market.
A shelf.
Yeah.
It's a couple, no, it's a couple of shelves, it's just, you know, just like.
The closest one to, I mean, I'm originally Arabic guy, so we go to, always to the south side to get, you know, like, whatever you're missing, about six miles. We thought maybe whoever like us and maybe other people want, they can be to buy a can of something. So we have the space, we put eight shelves of that.
You're gonna have your sauces and seasonings.
Yeah, we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one given the discussion here about the back area and the buffer. Would you be adverse to putting in taller shrubbery?
Yeah, that's fine, but between, between us and the neighbor, there is already shell, I mean, fence, there are already fence and he have it, you know, security thing from his end, but we could put from our end to, the thing, he has two windows that he said, he mentioned that the light was like maybe forty degrees or so, so we, we made the light now this way and the light doesn't come to his windows anymore. And I talked to him a couple of times because I see him cutting ground. So once we had the light like that, it did not get to him, but if we want to support security, we have no problem also. We could do that.
And he, he did mention that the light was, because initially he complained about it right when they were opening, not knowing about the special land use permit. He said the light, the lighting is a lot better than it used to be, but he still will be required to put in the full cutoffs.
We look forward to you working with our staff then on, on, on that project.
You're the thing.
Any other questions of the applicant? Anyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Kessler, my address is six two four Iris Avenue, right kitty corner behind this, the crack chicken place. Okay. A couple of things that I wanted to bring up, first and foremost, like you talked about lighting, okay? I know he says he's moved the lights, things like that where I live at, okay? The good thing is, is he does turn his lights off at eleven and twelve, okay? If he did not turn his lights off, then that would be a problem for me where I live, okay? The neighbor right behind me, okay, he's not here to speak for himself, but him and I have conversed and talked about the same thing, okay? The other thing was, is when I came up here about a month and a half ago or so, when this first came up, okay? It's not just the lighting at this gentleman's place, but the lighting at A and W and One North, that just spills into my room, my house like it's unfreaking believable, guys, okay? A and W's lights, I mean, come by my house, look at any time at night time, guys. What should we call it, One North lights, okay, on the poles coming right into my lights. Last time we were here and this gentleman was here and we talked about, I don't see anybody else here from the last time I was here, anyway.
Probably just, we have one member that crosses over, yeah.
Anyway, we're talking about getting the lights down to the ninety-degree angle, okay? Putting the surrounds around them and all this kind of stuff. And when the lady was up here, not you, but another lady was up here, she said, give us time, give us time, okay? Well, how much time is time do we need before we decide this, okay? That's one of my things, okay, about the lighting and everything. Another thing about his place over there, I know he might not have control about it because I live so close over there. He's had several occasions now where he's had a group of cars in there, okay? What do you want to call them, quicker cars? You know what, guys, I'm talking about, the young kids, boom, 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 you know what I mean? Hearing that kind of noise, okay? And going, oh my gosh, is this going to be going on forever or what the heck's going to be going on, okay? So that's another thing that I don't know if you were concerned about or not, okay? That you get the younger kids with their cars, boom, 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 type thing, you know, maybe trying to show off their cars, things along that nature, okay? And then the last thing I guess I want to say is somebody said something about parking, okay? And where he was parking in the back, because I like live there, okay? He's parking behind his place, half on the driveway and half on the grass, okay? That's where he's parking, his employees, okay? Not him, people, as you, I thought, maybe he thought maybe the cars were parking there, okay? But his employees are parking there in that grass called concrete area.
Okay, thank you.
But that's all I gotta say, guys, thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So what about the lighting issue?
So, so he's going to be required to go through site plan review, well, that's put in full, I, I think the manager's office has been working with the A and W and possibly One North on that issue, so they, they could probably speak to that, because that's a, a strange thing with like the, the lighting he's talking about was put in by BWL and their poles and the, oh, Peter's got it.
All right.
Do you mind? No. Manager's office, Peter Mensah, Director of Community Economic Development. So I have been working with, I did meet Mr. Kessel on the phone, you don't recognize me in person, but, so, yeah, I, the A and W situation is a little more challenging because there are poles that are on BWL's lights. There are lights that are on BWL pole, it's an aberration along the corridor, you don't see those lights. So we're working with, I don't have an answer for you tonight, but we're working BWL to address that situation and to try to prevent it in the future. And we can engage with One North on the pole light to, to provide a shielded fixture.
Okay.
To address the concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. So are there signs, I've never seen signs that say, please lower your music or keep sounding down. It would be nice if they did, because I know it's frustrating when you're in a line, it's like.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that'd be something, if, if, yeah, people were inclined, you, you could ask them to do that as well.
Make a sign, I mean, while people, that people could see, not just at the window, but while they're driving, just like, safe, safe thing.
Require one owner to do it, then it.
Yeah.
We'd have to require every business that is open at late at night on Saginaw to do it.
Right.
Which would be One North, A and W, Crack Chicken, Taco Bell.
There's, there's big skating in that area, there's a lot of.
For a drive-through?
Yeah.
You're talking about drive-throughs?
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is that if we're going to require a business to put up a sign that says, please keep the music down, right? There's people that come into these restaurants with their music glaring and sit in the parking.
Oh, okay.
So if we're going to require it of one enterprise, then we'd have to require it of all of them.
Well, I'm not saying to require it, but just to ask them if maybe he could do it, that's all. He knows that there's an issue there, so.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
Just suggest it, you know.
Okay. Thank you, no, it's a good point. Any other questions, comments?
I have one more, I just thought of, on your entrance to, on, on Saginaw, if you come in, you look at that sign that says, do not enter. I would suggest that they change it to do not exit.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
We have one more comment?
Yeah. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Yes, sir.
Lyle, at the grade five thirty-three field.
What was that address again, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
What was, what was the address again, I'm sorry?
Five three three.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, five thirty-three field, be, next year will be fifty years, okay? I've never come here and whined and cried about any business that went in there from Delta floats to the credit union or anything. I'm glad you drove over there today and checked, because there are some issues. Lighting, like the good gentleman back there said, was very, I went up, probably six weeks ago, I went upstairs, I have a two-story colonial, I walked, it's light, I want to step, and then this Craig that's not here tonight, I asked him about it and, and he said, then we're gonna fix that, the owners are gonna fix that. But since then, there's a, I don't want to say it, I've, I've, I got a pretty decent nose, but there's a awful odor that comes from that, and I believe it's the peanut oil, does he, do you use peanut oil to fry, what do you use?
Is it wood oil?
Huh?
Is it wood oil?
Okay, very pungent at times, and when the wind comes out of the north northwest, it comes right to my backyard. And I noticed it, and the other neighbors have noticed it, but they're not into the boundaries to get an issue to come here, and I told them, and then we had the issue that I showed up here a couple of weeks ago. It was canceled because the initial statement, somebody put, the meeting was on Sunday night, the twenty-fourth, did you? And then they rescheduled the meeting, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what happened, yeah.
That's what happened, I don't know how that happened, but there was more people here that night that you allegedly was gonna schedule, but had the date wrong that Monday night, was it two weeks ago? And, and there, there was nobody here tonight, but there needs to be a buffer. I remember, like I said, I lived there fifty years before One North was there, it was Reno's, and before it was Reno's, right beside it was a place called Rex Roast Beef. And right beside Rex was Holly's, I believe, Steak and Ford. Okay, so, anyway, before I could afford air conditioning, it was I'd be up, I, I worked at GM, I have, I know Ford been on the district yard, I worked at GM, and I would hear this at eleven o'clock at night, could I have a roast beef and some, and, and it was just echoing, you know, because I obviously sleep on the second story. And one, make me really hungry, put on a little weight because I was hungry, I'd run down to get some D, but it was a real pain, so there, there does need to be a noise abatement area in that back, I don't know what, I know Rex. First, you heard this gentleman is not having a drive-through. Yeah, and, but then to the gentleman that was here talking about hot rods, about four weeks ago, not quite four weeks ago, there was a, it was a, like a week night, and like three Dodge Chargers pulled up and they got out, sat on the curb, then they went into the, got some D, didn't come out, when they left Southbound, let's just say they had their foot right in an exceeding twenty-five mile an hour. I love that, I, I love my street, I was all for those streetlights, I wasn't so hot for the sidewalks, but wind didn't them anyway, but there needs to be a buffer in there, and you guys need to go look, and I know it's not complete yet, but parking on the lawn like you've seen today, that's happens every day, and when they're crowded, the overflow goes back there. So I, I believe in free enterprise and as long as it's up to code and what you guys, I'm glad we're not, the buffer zones need to be there. But you guys need to take a look at it, too, and I thank you for your time. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Those cars they were talking about, what happened, there's a group of people came to Lansing to, as many show off their cars or something, maybe about ten cars, they came to the store, bought food and, and ate it and left.
Right.
And that's, that's what happened.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, I, I live on, off of Willow and Elmwood, and either one of those areas after the stoplight turns green, eleven o'clock at night, I can hear them, so you know, that's more a question for Delta Patrol than anything else. Any other questions or comments? It would be the pleasure of the commission.
Need to close the public hearing.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. McConnell.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Support. Been moved and supported to close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Now would be the pleasure of the commission.
I approve the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the Delta Township Board approval of the special land use permit requested for a drive-through restaurant at forty-nine zero one West Saginaw Highway as described in case number zero eight dash two three dash one one, for the following reasons listed, which there are two, along with the conditions, I have a privilege, there are three.
Support.
Move by Member Bradley, supported by Member Metta.
No question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Was there a, was there a recommendation that, that the vegetation be?
Yeah, yeah, you would need to add, that's the motion, so, yeah, the only thing in the motion was the, just telling them that they would have to go through site plan review, so yeah, if, if you would like that, you would have to add that to the motion for the, for the trees, the tree, or trees instead of shrubs.
Okay, I'd like to make that amendment to the motion.
Okay. The Member McConnell moves to amend the motion that the commission recommends various trees and or shrubbery that provides for screening.
Support.
That's supported by the all those in favor, Member McConnell's amendment, or aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, it's just on the amendment.
Oh.
The motion's been amended, so we need to approve the amendment. Now, on the full motion with the amendment, the move by Member Bradley, supported by Member Metta, any further discussion? Secretary McConnell, please take the role.
Member Schweitzer.
Yes.
Member Metta.
Support.
Member Mutry.
Support.
Member Kozinski.
Support.
Member Bradley.
Support.
Secretary McConnell supports. And Chair Wainfield.
Support.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hadad and those who spoke today, I'm sure that our staff will be working with the owner on these various elements still to come with the, with the business, thank you.
Yep, yep, and yeah, as you discussed, the, the final vote will be by the Township Board. Yep, yep, yeah, as you discussed, uh the, the final vote will be by the township board, uh most likely next Monday, I'll double check, but it should, should be next Monday. And I'll, I'll send you a staff report and we'll be in touch about same, same process for that, so. Thank you, yep.
You have a nice.
You too.
Thank you.
Thanks, you too.
Are there any other public comments Friday night on the agenda? Okay, planning director comments?
There's nothing prepared for the commission, but I'll entertain questions on anything you've seen while you're out and about throughout the township.
Gary, I don't recall what the new building was supposed to be. West of uh the Arby's, and west of the market there on, on uh. Say, uh, the new building is going in there.
West of.
West of the Arby's, and also there's that Asian market, I believe it is.
Oh, Young's Beauty Supply.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Different Arby's, all right.
Yeah, I do, or yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Which side is Saginaw, yeah?
That's the south side.
Yes, that's what, it wasn't clear.
And then there's space for a couple of other businesses.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the tenants are gonna be in the other spaces, I've heard cell phone store, I've heard other things, but. I, I don't know for sure, but Young's Beauty Supply is gonna be the main anchor, I guess I'll call it.
Though across from the, that area is the still vacant. Uh former training center, school, that was going to be a call center before COVID.
Yes.
Any movement or word on that?
Well, the drain commissioner uh bought it, or has an option. For the purely significant drain project that's gonna happen east side of the township. And their proposal is to remove that building in favor of detention pot.
Okay.
Um they haven't decided, and we haven't really talked to him in detail, but there's been discussions about. Perhaps leaving the front edge as a commercial. Or building out there, having the rear area, the northern area, uh has detention, maybe even some kind of park link. Setting back there, so we haven't, that hasn't been worked out, but the drain office has it under their control.
Thank you.
Gary, you want to mention the second detention pot area?
That's on Waverly Road, uh former, you know, several churches have, uh.
Right.
They proposed facilities, but they were never constructed, so that's really the only other significant open. Land available for anything like that, so yeah, they also have that parcel.
Who does the drain commission?
Straight up this again.
Now has that.
The more detention that they can provide, the cheaper it's gonna be to construct that, that project, so.
Okay, yeah, okay. Anyone else?
Yes, one more question. Any, any word on it, movement on a daycare center off of the arrow Waverly that?
Well, luckily, you have the expert on that project with us tonight.
I don't know about expert, but I have been working with them, so the last time you saw them, they got their. Special land use permit approval to establish a daycare center on the site, and they got some variances for the site as well. Um, fast forward to the summer, um I met the owner, um. And was able to connect them to, or I think someone put a bug in my ear, that they should be connected to. Some, the ME DC staff and LEAP staff. Um to, because their project right now doesn't really have financing, they have a, an idea for the project. And the owner bought that building, but it was an old office building, it's two stories, she doesn't have a use for the upstairs. The office market right now in this area is uh an abundance of office space. So they don't really need that upper floor for office space, so the idea. So far, and I guess this is a preview of things to come, is they would ultimately be requesting to rezone that site to commercial. And then the commercial zoning would allow them to establish with a special land use permit, a mixed use building. That would allow apartments upstairs and then the daycare on the lower level. Now, a lot of things would have to happen on their end to make, to make that happen, so they right now have an architect that's looking preliminarily at how that might work. How many units they could get, they're working with a consultant. To help them kind of plan all the financial part of it out, to make sure the numbers all ring true. And then you may see a request to, to rezone, so um actually Gary and I did a call with. The owner and their pro, their project team recently to just talk about that. So we may or may not see that come through soon, but that is one, that, that's the approach the owner's considering right now.
Are they still going ahead with the daycare center?
Well, that, that's part of the challenge, I, I don't know if the daycare center would happen on its own.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the daycare would, and I don't know this person's finances, but it sounds like that would all kind of be one thing. That the apartments would help support daycare center, but further, the apartments would make them eligible for. Other types of support through the ME DC and through LEAP, so it makes that project more viable to people that. Provide grants and other kind of financing mechanisms for them.
Thank you. You wanna stay there for a second?
Sure.
I got a question, Mister Chair. The at-home bricks.
Yes.
Okay, where are we at that, and is there any movement on the residential part of that big development?
Are you comfortable with me speaking on that?
You wanna tag team that or?
I'll, I'll take, why don't I start, then there will be the township manager, he can supplement as needed, so the, I. Very challenging situation to deal with, the, for, for now, the wall that fell on the, what is that, the?
North side.
Uh yeah, so the at-home building, it's at least contained, and it's fenced off, so there's like a double fence there to keep. People from getting in, so keep in, and I just met with the BJ's manager um as well, because they were, they were concerned about overlap with our customers. And I guess they had some kids that were playing around over there, so it's all contained at least. We have a structural, a report from a structural engineer showing that the vault, the wall, what's left of it is, is viable. So they may, and long term, we think that at-home wants to be here in, in the township. And so they would be reconstructing that wall, I don't have any timetables for that, so in the short term, it's basically been kind of made safe. And uh, you know, barring some significant weather like we had before. At least it's safe and an engineer is telling us that it's not going to fall over further. And um hopefully can have some resolution to getting that cleaned up and moving ahead with it. On the residential component, I don't, I don't think Brian knows any more than I do, but we've been talking to the, the developer, they don't have any kind of like timeline on. Deck spaces of that project, the township's position on it is uh finish your obligations to the first phase, or the first, first and second phase. Before you can move ahead to the other one, so there's a handful of punch list items that have to happen there before we even contemplate considering. An application for any future phases.
My intent of the question was, you know, is there any discussion at all, or is it dead, you know? So it sounds like it's kind of uh maybe positive, but no.
Yeah, I think it's just once that they're waiting for the legal issues to be resolved, the, the developer that did the first couple of phases still wants to proceed with the rest of the project. They haven't, hasn't abandoned anything.
Okay.
So I think it's just resolving all the issues between the, I don't know the complications of the legal issues, but. Once that gets resolved, something will break through, break out.
Maybe next year.
Potentially. Sorry for the wishy-washy answer, that's about, that's all we know.
It's kind of what I expected, you know, I didn't figure that there was any clear cut plan.
Mm-hmm.
But as long as it's kind of positive, it makes me feel better, rather than, you know, it's dead.
Yeah, it's not dead.
Okay.
Now, is this what's.
As long as you're feeling better.
What, I'm, I'm feeling almost warm and fuzzy, almost.
It'll be that weather.
What we're talking about is, is still the one that we, that the township has approved, or is there something further?
Uh no, as far as we all know, it would just be the same thing, that we haven't heard otherwise, that they're very well could be. Proposed changes to their overall plan for the site, but we haven't seen anything different than what came through here.
Thank you.
Any other questions, your thoughts?
Nothing, Brian? Not gonna do it all.
Peter's done a fantastic job.
Yeah.
We greatly appreciate that.
Helpful.
Yeah, I really appreciate that.
Very much appreciated.
Okay, there being nothing else uh before the commission, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just, just a comment, Mister Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh as Gary had mentioned, uh I had an opportunity to go to the MTA conference. Um in Harbor Springs, Michigan. Which is longer than I thought it was from here, but anyway, uh the content was excellent. Uh was on zoning and the planning, uh the presenters uh were knowledgeable. And the presentations did not put you to sleep. Uh. I, I intend to write a, a, a write-up, I told Gary I would of the conference. But I strongly encourage the planning commission members, if they have an opportunity in the future to attend the event, it's very worthwhile.
Okay. Anything else, any other comments from the commission?
And I move for adjournment.
Moved by member McConnell, support, or by member Swick, to adjourn all, favor say aye, it's a jurors.
What are they doing on ninety-six over there down by the river?